Merry Christmas. It's a great day in Kershaw County. It's especially a great day to have this great football team here in this all-American city. Thanks for coming, Coach. We hope you get these boys back to their studies as soon as we can. All right, with that, we have a quorum. We're now called to order. Mr. Tucker is en route. He had a car breakdown, but we have sufficient to conduct our business. And with that, I turn to Mr. Bozard for the invocation and the pledge.
Sir.
Would you all please stand?
Good gracious, Father. Thank you for this day. Thank you for all the blessed life. I just pray, Father, we will never forget that this is the time of year we celebrate your birth. Christmas is about you, nothing else. This body is here tonight, Father. I pray that you will continue to give us the wisdom, courage to do the job that we need to be doing. This day, Father, is ours. So you give it to us. All we ask in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, in your world, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in your being, justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bozard. We now move to public comments. Mr. DeBoz, are there any signed up?
Mr. Chairman and members of council, one person signed up. That one person is Wesley Crowley.
What was the last name, please?
Crowley. C-R-O-L-E-Y, Crowley.
Very good. Mr. Crowley, as you come up, this is a time for us to listen and not to exchange questions. We ask you to keep your comments focused on an item or two that is useful for us as a county and to conduct our business. And reminder to keep your quorum and your comments consistent with this body. Please, sir, Mr. Crowley, and Merry Christmas.
How y'all doing today? First of all, I like to ask a few questions, which I know I won't get no answers to, but the public needs to know. Why y'all selling us out to Richland County and Anex and Elgin? A lot of people don't even know that. My next question is, they land on 521 that was bought years ago. Y'all done nothing with it. Something was said about the state to do something with it. Nothing's never been done. Well, come to find out, it's an inside job. Whoever the agent was, sold it to you. Y'all know him personally. That's one thing. The next thing is, y'all want to sell out to Richland County, that's fine. But remember, these people back here, including me and everybody else in this county, pays y'all to do the right thing. And so far, y'all ain't done the right thing. Y'all took our money, y'all wasted it, bought land, throwing money away in projects that are no good. And it's about time for it to stop. And as I hear it right now, I'm putting my dedication in to running against y'all. And I ain't got the money to run against you, but I got the face of Jesus Christ that I will run. I may not make it to this council, but I will run against you. And I'm gonna put the bad ones out. And it's time for y'all to start helping the people instead of taxing them into poverty. I'm living in a rabbit box right now. But you know what? The good God man above looks after me. I work for my room and board in a rabbit box. You remember that. And I pay you salary. I pay taxes. So you need to quit taking our money and throwing it away on worthless projects and do the right thing. Because I'm running against you. You can believe that. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Mr. DeBoz?
That concludes the sign up list.
All right, very good. Now, the next item up on the board is a public hearing. A public hearing regards to an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee-in lieu ad valorem tax and incentive agreement by and between Kershaw County and Midlands Regional Rehabilitation Hospital. One or more affiliated or related entities to provide for payment of a fee-in lieu tax. I'll open the hearing and see if anyone will come forward. Mr. Boz informs me that a representative of that company is here today. Would you please stand up, young man, young lady? There you go. Thank you for coming tonight. Seeing there's no one coming forward, then we will close the hearing and move on to the next item, which is adoption of the agenda. I will note that we are going to drop item number two. The resolution recognizing the Carolina Cup Racing Association at Tab B. As they cannot attend tonight, they will be back here next meeting on the 14th of January. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda with that amendment? And...
Some move.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bozard. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous, and we move on to a resolution. Item number one. That's what these young men are here for. A resolution honoring the Camden High School football team. It's on the board and it's in your packets, gentlemen, at Tab A. I'm gonna have Mr. Snodgrass read it, as he is the bill's sponsor. And then we'll vote on it, and then we'll have that wonderful team up here. Mr. Snodgrass, would you do the honors, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas Kershaw County recognizes the Camden High School football team on their outstanding 2019 season. And whereas the Bulldogs went 12-2 on their way to claim the Class 3A Region Four championship. And whereas the Bulldogs made an appearance in the Class 3A Final Four finishing as semifinalists. And whereas the Bulldogs outscored their opponents 580 to 324 during the 2019 season. And whereas the Bulldogs led the state in rushing yards and was the only team to have two running backs to each have over 1,400 yards. And whereas multiple players led the state in multiple categories, both on offense and defense. And whereas Coach Brian Rimpf was named the Class 3A Coach of the Year. Now, therefore, Kershaw County Council hereby congratulates the Camden High School football team on their Region Four championship and outstanding season that took them to the Class 3A Final Four. We wish them success in the seasons to come as they build upon this standout year for their program, done this 10th day of December 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass. Do you wish it? Mr. Snodgrass, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, sir. Sir, I would make a motion that we adopt and accept this resolution honoring these outstanding young men who are here today.
Yeah, whoa. A second?
Second.
Oh, let's all fight for it. Mr. Gardner, go ahead. I'll give it to Mr. Gardner. Any discussion?
Well, sir, I just want to say, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Just want to say, boys, congratulations on a great season. I know you didn't get the goal that you wanted to get, but you guys made some great strides this year. And for the Camden community, it gave us a sense of community on Friday nights. My family and I were able to enjoy several games this year, and you guys were just a very... This team was very exciting to watch. It was just exciting football out there on the gridiron. So you boys should be proud and really excited about where we're going. Thanks, guys.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Conell?
Fellas, as a very proud graduate of Lugolf Elgin High School, I have to say I couldn't be more proud of you. I actually know a little bit of what you've experienced, just because Coach Mack used to beat me up when I was in high school. And Coach speaks as well. And whenever Coach Rimpf came to town, we got he and all the head coaches together, and we saw something special in him. So we're just so proud of you. Keep working hard.
Other comments? Mr. Jones?
Your turn.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, congratulations. A great year. Just shows you what you can do when you work together. Congratulations to the coaches. I used to coach. I know how much hard work goes into it, but you know, there are a lot of teams sitting at home last week that'd like to have been there where you were. So be proud of your accomplishments.
Sure.
Look forward to a little further next year.
Other comments? Mr. Bozard?
Yes, like Mr. Conell, my children went to Lugolf, but I'm gonna echo him. I'm definitely proud of you. Proud of you being from Kershaw County, and congratulations. Keep up the good work.
Other comments? Mr. Jones, I think you had your hand up.
If I could, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. Guys, I'm very proud of you. Being a competitor all my life, of course, I live in Lugolf. My son graduated Lugolf Elgin High. Let me tell you something right now. Camden High School represents this entire county. And we are so proud of you guys. And I think you got some Lugolf coaches back there, don't you? Calvin, former. But coaches, we're proud of you. You're good mentors for these young men, and I tell you what, this is just the beginning of their lives. And so congratulations, and we're very proud.
Now, I'll close it out. Good words all across the board. I apologize for my voice. But I was out watching y'all work out in July and August when the rest of those young men were chasing the girls or up on the lake or smelling perfume or car fumes. And you showed dedication. Then the coach asked me to talk to you. I didn't know what to say. So I brought a picture of my dad from 1931 with his, the Bulldog champions of 1931. And I turned to the coach and I said, "This is an awful young team." And he said, "I think they can do it." Coach, you show great leadership. I will also tell you, you're bringing these young men along with the leadership that we, the county, we, the nation, need. Not too long after 1931, my father found himself tonight in World War II at the Battle of the Bulge. He was wounded and got out with his skin, came home and to raise a family, to include me. I don't know what the future holds for you, but you've got a great start. And what you learn on that field from one another and your coaches, especially from one another, will carry you through the rest of your life. With that, I think we can vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous. Coach, you want to get that team up here? Yeah, thank you.
Hey, congratulations.
I'd have to stand up here.
Mark, did you get it, Mark? Yes, I can't get every single one of you.
Okay, on three, go Bulldog. One, two, three, go Bulldog.
That was great. Thank you very much. We move now to the public business or public presentations. Our first item is item number one, led by the great Mr. Phil Gaines. That's redundant. The presentation is to give us an update to understand what's going on with the Battle of Camden and the Visitor Center, led by this young man who was a great leader of our state as the director of Parks and Rec. And now he is working with and for and through and with and by us to bring us an amazing opportunity. Over to you, Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, citizens. Good to be with you all tonight. What a, what a, what a special time to be with the Camden Bulldogs. And it really ties together what part of what we're trying to do with the Visitor Center and the tourism action plan that we'll talk more about. But it really epitomizes a sense of place that Kershaw County is. So we'll go ahead and get started. I'm gonna use my magic clicker like this. So one of the things that you always hear, being a native of South Carolina and the son of the South, is when you hear about the Revolutionary War, every community talks about the particular battles that happened in that community. And it was the turning point of the revolution, right? Everywhere is the turning point of the revolution. So we took a different idea of that turning point of the revolution and looked at what we were doing here in Kershaw County, and particularly at the Visitor Center that you see coming up out of the ground. And this will be the starting point of your excursion, your journey on the Southern Campaign of what happened in the Revolutionary War. It started right here in Kershaw County. So we're in the process of telling that story. And the Camden experience exploring Kershaw County, and we're doing this for what we've kind of talked about as the bookends. On one of the bookends would be as you come off the interstate, as you come into town, where the Visitor Center is going to be. And you get that first experience of telling the story. You're right beside Historic Camden, so there's a lot of natural energy there that'll be able to tell that story. The other end of the bookend is the Battlefield Site, the Battle of Camden Site, that is going through this transformation of a sense of place to where it's a real tangible place that you can go see, feel, and touch. And we're working on, and the county is working on with the American Battlefield Protection Society or Association, doing tangible stuff to tell that story. So you got the bookends on one side of the county and the other side of the county. You got multiple agencies and people working on this to tell this story that started right here in Kershaw County. This is an artist rendition of the Visitor Center that probably a lot of y'all have seen in the newspapers and around town. It kind of sees it. Now you can start seeing it come out of the ground. As you come into town, the biggest structure that you see coming out of town is the focal point of the center where the exhibits will be, where we'll tell the story of the American Revolution and the Southern Campaign. So, Christmas time. So here we go. If you haven't rode by, it's a, we're finishing talking about it, and now we're really doing it. So we've got steel coming out of the ground. Hope to pour some slabs of concrete in the next few weeks. And before you know it, you'll start seeing this transformation of this lot that'll turn into the Visitor Center that'll be the starting point of telling the story of the Southern Campaign, which in turn changed the world and changed this nation. There's still a lot of work to do. We're excited about what's going to happen there. We're also excited about the product development that is going on at the Battle of Camden Site. Tremendous, tremendous opportunities down at that site that really tells the story of this, the actual place where you can tangibly understand what happened here in Kershaw County. Inside this facility will tell the story of not only what happened at the Battle of Camden, what happened in Kershaw County, but how this changed the route of the war and in the Southern Campaign. We'll go through different exhibits. It'll take you from why the war started until the end of the war, the turning point, and more importantly, the very last thing you'll do is, now what do I do? It'll be the opportunity to go explore Kershaw County and some of the things that are very special and unique to our community. These are some renderings of some of the inside where the Visitor Center will be with some of the exhibits that we'll be talking about. That'll be spectacular, state of the art. When you come in, you'll really get the sense of a first-class facility, a world-class facility, if you will. And our timetable is, the steel is coming out of the ground now. So this time next year, we'll start talking about when we're going to open this facility, and we'll start incorporating the exhibits in. My guess is we're looking for a spring of 2021 grand opening. So again, some more renderings of what it'll look like inside. We're finalizing some of these things with the exhibits. This is the last exhibit that you'll go through. And this tree that'll have these virtual images of things to see and do around Kershaw County. Not just the Visitor Center, but this concept of the bookends and all the stuff that's in between and about. Why come to Kershaw County? What else is here? And really think that we do this right with all the players that we have. We'll make a tremendous impact, not only on the sense of place that we have here in Kershaw County, but also economic development ideas that'll bring people here, not to come and go to this Visitor Center for one time, but to stay, spend the night, look at other things to explore. With that, I've been telling this little version of, we've been talking about doing something with the Battle of Camden and the Visitor Center for a long time. It's now. It's real. It's coming out of the ground. And my advice is, company's coming, so we got to get ready. Company's coming, ready or not. So part of that is there are tremendous opportunities for this community to make an impact and to use this as an economic engine, this sense of place, this green infrastructure, if you will, that not only provides economic impact, but also provides a sense of place and this quality of life that we are so proud of with things that we saw tonight with the Camden Bulldogs and the things that are going on. But there's a lot of work to be done. There's some product development that needs to be done because company's coming. And we're going to encourage them to leave this Visitor Center and Historic Camden to go to all these other assets that the county has. Chairman Burns has talked to me several times about the tourism product and how to develop that tourism product and a plan for that. And I think now's the time for us to start thinking about that. You have tremendous, tremendous resources in this town, in this community, and in this county. And when people come to visit and they explore and know the things that are out there, they'll be back. They'll spend the night. They'll see these things. Sometimes people who live here, people who live not only in Kershaw County, but in South Carolina, we're the last ones to see what a great resource we have, because we sometimes take it for granted. I started my career at Lake Watery State Park. I was the very first superintendent at Lake Watery State Park. And I'm originally from Greenville. Never heard of Lake Watery. And I was hooked the first time I saw a sunrise over Lake Watery. And, you know, and then a sunset over Lake Watery. And it's a special place, just like the rest of this county. I'm excited and humbled to be a part of this. Enjoyed working with members of council, Chairman Burns and Vic. Enjoyed, and enjoy working with you guys and looking forward to working with this community in making a difference and looking for an opportunity to make a difference, not only in this sense of place, this quality of life, but this economic engine that these projects can be for this town. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your opportunity to let me be here tonight.
If you don't mind, we can submit to a few questions.
Yes, sir.
And as you can tell, Phil doesn't have a lot of passion for this. Members of council, any discussion, comments?
That was hard to do because the chairman says 10 minutes is all you got.
That's right. Go back to the chart with the tree on it.
Yes, sir.
And explain that that's intended to...
I think it's to back.
Get people to go out.
I see it right there. I'm sorry.
There it is. To go out into the county. And it'll have representational directions to Lugolf, Elgin, Watery.
Liberty Hill.
Go ahead. Can you explain that?
Yes, sir. So you'll go through and you'll learn this experience of what's happened in the Revolutionary War and why it happened here and what happened after the events of the Battle of Camden. So you're intrigued about that, and you'll go to an exhibit that the Liberty Trail is doing about all their other skirmishes throughout this area. And then you'll say, "God, it's a lot to do." And then you go to this tree where this virtual tree is, where some visuals like screen TVs, flat-screen TVs, that'll show powerful images of interesting and fascinating places around the county, like sunrises and sunsets at Lake Watery and, you know, mist coming off the, at the steeple trace grounds and all the things, Liberty Hill and the topography and the granite and all the things that make this community very special. And you'll say, if you're a visitor coming off I-20, you'll go, "Where is that? Where's the lake? And how far is it? And what can I do when I get there?" And then that's our opportunity to hook folks and say, "This is more than an hour visit through a Visitor Center. This is a two or three-day visit, and you need a place to stay, and you need a place to eat lunch, and you need a place to buy gas, and we want you to stay here longer." Because there are some really, really interesting, cool things in Kershaw County. We just need to showcase it and tell folks how to get there and what to do when they get there.
Any other?
Mr. Chairman.
Ben Conell, go ahead.
That's part one question. I'm wondering, overall, for the Liberty Trail, do we know the completion for that? And where does this fit into it?
I'm sorry, the first part.
The Liberty Trail overall is supposed to go from the upstate down to the low country, roughly, right?
Right. So here at the Visitor Center, the Liberty Trail will have an exhibit in there that will be state-of-the-art, where you'll be able to know where all these battles and skirmishes were. And then the development of that virtual trail, for lack of a better word, so that you'll be able... This will be the place where you find out where the Liberty Trail goes. From Charleston all the way up to Guilford Courthouse and all those spots in between. From Hopkirk Hill to Blackstock to Kings Mountain, Cowpens, Guilford Courthouse in North Carolina. And they'll be exhibited in this Visitor Center that the American Battlefield folks are sponsoring and are working on diligently to do that. So again, another way, start your visit here in Kershaw County and expand it out. Come back. Make this your home base.
And we have spent a lot of time in the last three years getting other people's money to do this, OPM.
Absolutely.
We have money coming from several national organizations in Washington that are helping us expand the battlefield, to pay for this, to pay for some of the infrastructure. And one of those guys is a Mr. Lighthizer. His brother is National Security Advisor to the President. And he's the guy that brought forward the Mexico deal. We've met with the French, the British, and German ambassador embassies. And they're very interested because they all fought here, and others. So all that's coming together in wonderful ways, thanks to people like Mr. Gaines. Further, at the state level, our governor has agreed on a thing called RevWar250, which would be the 250th anniversary. And this facility and what we're doing for the county will bring in a lot of folks at the state and national level. Mr. Carpenter is on the board advising the governor. So you can see the city of Camden and the county of Kershaw is nationally and statewide known to get some stuff happening. And I want you to know we're joined at the hip with our mayor in Camden, and things are moving forward very well. We got work to do. We'll talk a little bit of that during the budget cycle coming up and in the next budget cycle for the year 2122. But for now, I wanted you all to have this appreciation. Any further questions for Dr. Gaines, sir?
Quick comment. Appreciate what you're doing. The city, I guess, hired you, or did the Historic Camden hire you?
The cities.
I want to tell you something about City Camden. They got it going on. They're really doing well. I see buildings going up everywhere. You know, may not be manufacturing jobs, but bottom line is you guys are creating jobs. You're doing a good job, whatever you're doing. We need to ride your coattail. Thank you for being here tonight. You're doing a great job as well, and I really enjoyed that.
Thank you, councilman. And if I could, I'll say this right here. One of the things that make this project work, and from the very beginning, when the general public comes to this facility, they're not going to say, "Is this a city facility? Or is this a county facility? Or is this a state?" They don't care. And the bottom line is, is that the reason this is going to work is because the city, the county, and the state, and the federal government, and these private folks that the chairman's talking about, see that this is worth doing. And if you do that old saying, if you don't care who really gets the credit, watch what'll happen. It's a, this will be a project that'll be associated with this community, regardless of you call it Camden, Kershaw County, the state of South Carolina. This is a significant national project, as the chairman has said, that we've drawn the attention of folks from all over because of, it's not a city project. It's not a county project. It's the right project. It's a, it's the right project that'll, that'll change this community. It's an opportunity to make a difference and I'm excited and humbled and proud to be a part of this team.
Thank you, sir. Well done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Phil. And safe journey home and Merry Christmas. Next item is item number two, the Clean Community Commission, Ms. Wanda Swan. Wanda, can you come forward?
Good evening, Chairman, Councilmen. Thank you for having me. His, um, comment that company's coming is so true and that's why we have a commission. Company's coming and we've got to be ready. And we're not ready as a county, um, as far as the beautification and the cleanliness of our county. Um, that's why it's so important of the job that we're doing and we need your support. Um, I'm here tonight to give you an update on our latest pickup. Um, it was held on November 2nd. We had conflict after conflict with football games and festivals and those type things. People were pulled in a lot of different directions, so we really struggled to get 92 volunteers. We covered 26.5 miles and we collected 321 bags of trash. That was with a minimal, um, amount of people that we could get together for this cleanup. Um, I am so pleased to tell you that, uh, Chairman Burns was out there helping us pick up trash, pick up litter. And I want to encourage each one of you councilmen to please join us. I know Councilman, um, Connel was with us in the spring, but what would it say to the community if each one of you joined us with a team to help with the litter situation in our county? It would speak volumes. We need you, we need your position, we need your influence, we need your friends to help us, um, combat this litter problem that we have. On the particular day, I want to say a special thank you to the South Carolina Highway Patrol. Trooper White came out to help keep us on Highway 97 a little more safer. This gentleman came out and within an hour had issued 11 citations for people speeding in excess of 10 miles over the posted limit as they saw our vest and our signs with us out picking up trash on the side of the road. So, um, a big thanks to them and to Kershaw County Sheriff's Department who also assisted in helping us stay safe. I have a list of the volunteers, um, that, that came and helped us that day and I have to say a special thanks to the city of Camden and to Tom Couch. Um, he was able to get 24 city Camden employee volunteers to come out and pick up. Um, so this is just a sample of what can be done when we really put forth a lot of effort with publicity, um, with radio, newspaper, that type of thing to get the word out. We have selected March 21st to be our spring pickup and I'm asking you to please put it on your calendars and plan to join us. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to call me or any of our council, uh, our commission members will be happy to, we would love to have you on our team. Representative Laurie Thunderberg was with us both times. She has been wonderful in helping us. It's a wonderful photo op for you, um, so please consider joining us in March. Um, our team learned a lot from this past pickup and I'm going to go over a few of things that we learned. We learned that there was no way to sugarcoat this. Beer drinkers are one of our biggest offenders. Um, I'm not sure how we're going to tackle that. I need your help on how we can tackle that particular situation, but it is definitely a problem. We also learned that a lot of trash is falling off the back of vehicles as they head to the recycle centers. We have obtained another 500 tarps from Palmetto Pride to be distributed and to our recycle centers, to be handed out to, um, folks that are coming in without their, their loads being tarped. We also need to monitor how those tarps are being given out. Haven't been able to find a lot of evidence of where they've been going. So that's another item that we need to really look at. Boaters are not removing their trash, even though we put signs up at the ramps. Um, we're still seeing a lot of styrofoam coolers, beer cartons, ice bags is a big, big thing. They're flying off the back of boats and they're ending up on the side of the roads. Um, so we are going to need our new officer, our new litter officer to monitor those boat ramps, um, maybe on a Saturday afternoon as people are leaving. And, um, if he did that, we could probably eliminate a lot of that litter. Another, um, item that we have recently realized is we're seeing a lot of bags of deer corn, empty deer corn from hunters and they're flying off the back of their trucks. I'm not saying that these guys are doing it deliberately, um, they're probably innocently doing this, but we've got to somehow bring attention to that. Our next problem that we realize that we have is we've got to have more volunteers. We have got to spend more on publicity, on radio, newspaper, whatever we can to get out the word that we need help with this situation. We need to educate the public, um, we're going to do that. We have applied for a grant from Palmetto Pride and we should hear by December 15th about that grant and how much we will receive. Hopefully we're looking at a $10,000 that we can use for billboards and education and to also, um, to make tracks for businesses that are compliant and also do a really good job in keeping their business fronts clean, nice and neat, their parking lots clean, nice and neat. We want to recognize one business per month. We're going to start that program in January. The most important need that we have, guys, is for you to stand beside us and work with us as we, um, as we try to get our county cleaner and more beautiful. We are going to be working with the South Carolina DOT on beautification. That has seemed to be a real stumbling block, um, and I'm trying to work through that. I've been in touch with, um, Gene Branham, who is the chairman of the South Carolina DOT, I'm not sure his position in the DOT.
The district, uh, where it's located in?
Um, he's going to be helping us to work with the DOT to see what kind of beautification. If you go to Spartanburg, to Greenville, to Charlotte, you see where intersections are beautiful, they're beautiful. They have shrubs, they have plants, they have trees. And there's no reason why we can't have that as long as it's safe. So that's another thing that we're going to be looking at for next year. Community awareness, um, is key. That's why we're going to be in the parade, the two local parades this weekend, just to bring in awareness, um, that we're here, we see that there's a problem and we're attacking it. So what I'm asking you is to please stand beside us, help us as we, um, start our new year.
Thank you for what you-
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Are you finished?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, Jimmy, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you so much for what you do. You know, your being here is, uh, and hearing what you're, the message you're delivering is, is really inspiring. That's exactly why Sammy Tucker and myself made sure we reenacted and renewed this commission because it was really sort of down and out and I want to, he's not here tonight, but applaud Councilman Tucker, standing by me to make sure we could get this commission back on board and my members of county council. One thing I'd like to do is, uh, you know, I'm a member of the Lugoff Optimists Club and we're going to be picking, we have sponsored a long strip, we clean up in Lugoff. And I'd love to have you come over and speak to them at some point in time. I'll get in touch with you on that and you can, and maybe we can even coordinate this and run it through you guys.
Okay.
So, uh, but, but thank you so much for all you do and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, the comments, uh, Mr. Snodgrass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanda, thank you so much for, uh, the work that you're doing. Uh, it's very important work. Sorry I couldn't be there in the fall, I was out of town, but, uh, I've got March 21st on my calendar and, uh-
Thank you.
Got it marked as a priority and, uh, really, really want to be there. And I echo some of the frustrations that you have. My, you know, my, my church is about a half a mile or so from the airport recycle center and I'm, I'm constantly picking up things out of the highway and taking it down to the recycle center for somebody else, um, things that have blown out and, and things of that nature. So, um, thank you so much for what you do. It's not, it's, I don't think it's coincidence that, uh, we had Phil speak to us about, uh, the Rev250 and the Welcome Center and then you came up after him because they really go hand in hand. Company is coming and as I, when I, when I drive around my camp, our county, uh, sometimes I get worried, you know, and because, I, I like you, I understand that litter can be a, it can be a deterrent of many things. Uh, we don't think about it in that, in that manner, but it really can be. So thank you for your work and, um, thank you, appreciate it. That's all.
Okay, Mr. Bozard, sir.
Wanda, thank you. Thank you and your committee both and I appreciate the signs that somebody's making and putting up. I see them all over the county and I do appreciate that and that's some of that advertisement you were talking about. But I do appreciate you and your committee, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Ben, please.
Wanda, I was thinking back to like the mid 90s when, as youth or teenagers, we would clean up with local churches. That seemed to be kind of the mode back then. A lot of churches would adopt a portion of road or highway and you would see the same issues then. It'd be drink containers, uh, food wrappings and cigarette butts. Maybe it's more vaping, uh, canisters or something nowadays, but in the cleanup we did in the spring, I remember seeing a lot of cigarette butts as well. That's why I think what you said about education and people understanding the importance of personal responsibility that is wrapped into liberty is so important to, to not, uh, one, violate the law as far as littering goes, but also take pride in your community and understand that, um, this is not real glorious work, but it's so necessary and the end result of what you do is very beautiful. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gardner.
Again, thank you for what you do. I think you find that, uh, lots of job security on that commission with, with the amount of trash that we have, so I don't think that that will ever go away. Uh, I'd just like for you to introduce the rest of your committee.
Thank you, Tom.
Please.
Would everybody stand up?
Bill, Tom.
Yeah, Bill. Tom, would you read off the names, please?
Bill Naddles, um, Doug Fielding and Tom Webb. And Judge Hardest had to leave. He, he tried to hang in there, but he had another obligation.
Thank you very much.
Thank all of you.
You're very welcome. And I must say that we, we got some shirts. Um, which we're very appreciative for. But thank you very much.
Well, the whole basic point here is, is that government is only as good as the people and in this case, uh, you certainly set a high mark, Wanda. Thank you very much and I appreciate it. Uh, with that, we move to the next item on the agenda. If my voice holds out, which is the approval of minutes dated 12th November, helpfully compiled for us by Lauren Reader at Tab C and on the board. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Snodgrass. Any discussion? Uh, none, welcome back, Mary. With that, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And the minutes are approved. We move now to a series of ordinances and Vic, I'm going to need your help here. The first one is at Tab D and it's also on the board. It's a third reading, uh, of a zoning map redesignation. Mr. Carpenter, can you talk us through it?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have tonight for third reading, rezoning of two parcels of land, approximately 13 acres in total, uh, from R15 to RDU to RD2. It was previously approved by the Planning Commission by a four to two vote and county council has passed it on its first two readings.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve on the third reading?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve on third reading.
Uh, thank you, David. A second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner, any discussion? Uh, seeing there is none, we can move to a vote on this third reading. All those in favor so signify. And it's unanimous, we move to item number two, the third reading of an ordinance, uh, again, a zoning map redesignation. Uh, Danny, is that out on the board?
Yep.
And it's at Tab E for your reference. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, bring us up to speed, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight on third reading, rezoning of two parcels of land of approximately 14 acres of land, uh, from R15 and GD to RD2. Council's previously approved this in two separate readings.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, making a motion to approve on third reading.
Uh, Mr. Snodgrass, a second, was that from you, Ben? Uh, Mr. Bozard, Mr. Bozard records the second. Uh, with that, um, any discussion? Uh, seeing there is none, we move to a vote. All those in favor on the third reading so signify. And it's unanimous, Mary, we move to item number three, another third reading of an ordinance, in this case, uh, ad valorem taxes and incentive agreements with the Rehabilitation Hospital. Uh, it's at Tab F and as I've previously noted, we have a representative from that organization. Mr. Carpenter, can you take us through it, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we have tonight in front of you on third reading, a fee in lieu of tax agreement between Kershaw County and the Midlands Regional Rehab Hospital, LLC. Uh, this agreement will result in the opening of a hospital, approximately 17.8 million dollar investment, 133 jobs with an approximate salary of $25. Previously had the public hearing.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Mr. Gardner, a second?
Second.
For Mr. Connel, that's his district. Again, Ben, should have given you the right. Uh, with that, we move to a discussion, uh, any discussion? It's a good way to close out the year. Uh, with that, we move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And it's unanimous and thank you, ma'am, for coming. I wish you a safe journey home. Thank you very much. Item number four is a first reading of an ordinance on official zoning map redesignation at J.O. Farms, I believe that's Johnny Outlaw, at, uh, Tab G and it's shown on the, uh, chart. With that, Mr. Carpenter, can you bring us on board?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, tonight you have in front of you on first reading an ordinance to rezone approximately seven, 72 acres of land in Antioch, uh, rezoning this from RD2 to GD. It has previously been approved by the Planning Commission on a five to one vote.
Very good. Can we have a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion.
Uh, Mr. Snodgrass, uh, again, a first, a second from Mr. Bozard, uh, discussion? Uh, Mr. Mr. Jones, go right ahead.
Mr. Outlaw, you had them fighting over making the motion. Go ahead.
Is Johnny here?
He is.
Where is Mr. Outlaw? There you are. I don't remember all that white hair, Johnny. All right. Very good. Uh, Mr. Snodgrass, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to, uh, just echo my support, uh, for this. This is in my, in my district and Mr. Outlaw, thank you so much for, uh, what you do for the community and, and, uh, he's used the community center for various things to bring people together and, and, uh, excited about, about the project that he has, uh, with, with this chain, so I support this tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if I may-
Yeah, Johnny and Jimmy, go ahead.
Thank you. Absolutely, I agree with you on that, uh, Councilman Snodgrass. I don't think we have anything else like it in Kershaw County. You know, we were out there a couple of weeks ago and, um, Henry Powers and myself, you know, with my son making some music, I think we packed a house and, uh, what a great host. And if you hadn't eaten at the Whistle Stop Cafe, you need to go out there and eat because they've got some good food as well. But anyway, thank you for what you have done for our community. We look forward to coming back out and having some more fun. Thank you, Johnny.
Any other discussion? Uh, Mr. Connel.
Just looking at Kershaw County and the demand that you have for gun-related activities, the shooting range at 601 has been quite successful. There's an indoor shooting range that came into Lugoff that's been successful and to the extent that's incorporated in this one, it looks like a, another opportunity for the community to, particularly in the eastern portion of the county, to take advantage of that. So thank you.
Uh, any other discussion? Uh, Mr. Bozard.
Thank you, sir. I had a number of people call me and ask me to support it and I even called the sheriff and the sheriff said he's in definitely support it. So you've got a lot of people behind you, sir, and I know in you, I know it's going to be a first-class place and I appreciate you doing it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim, for calling.
Thank you.
Very good. I, I would echo what Mr. Jones said about the type of county we're in, where citizens without help from government and certainly when government gets out of the way, citizens can step up and make us a better county. And when Antioch school closed, Johnny Outlaw had a plan. And if you haven't been to one of his rodeos, I recommend you do that, but he's the heart and soul of that area out there and I, I'll- there and I, I'll tell you, Johnny, it's an honor to have you in the county. Well done, sir. Uh, with that, I think we can go to a vote. All those in favor on the first reading, so signify. And it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Outlaw. Appreciate you being here. Uh, we move now to new business. Number, item number one is the County Council meeting schedule, which we are required to approve, uh, tonight on the last meeting of the year. As you know, we have one meeting in December and this one is, kicks off, uh, the opportunity for us to announce our schedule for the new calendar year. It's at Tab H and on the screen and with that, I pass, uh, Mr. Gardner for making the motion, please.
Uh, yes, I move to, uh, approve the calendar as presented.
Very good. Uh, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I make an amendment to that motion?
Uh, uh, let's go to, uh, get a second because we don't have the motion in yet.
No, I, I can make, I can do that.
We need a second first.
Okay.
I need a second.
I second it.
Okay, we got a second. Um, now we open discussion. Let me defer to the lead here.
I have a motion for amendment on the table.
Do you want to go ahead?
Well, uh, the calendar that I presented is two meetings in the first six months and one meeting each in the, the last six months. Uh, yeah, I think we use that this year and it proved very successful. I don't think that after we get through with the budget that our agendas are so strong where it requires two meetings, uh, if it did, we can always call a meeting. So, I present to you this calendar for, uh, two meetings, January through June and one meeting each in, uh, July through December.
Okay, very good. Mr. Jones, take off.
Thank you so much for your attention, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Um, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion and the amendment would be to go back to two meetings a month and of course we'll do one meeting at 5:30, then let's do another meeting at 7:30 so we can give folks time to get off and work and be here and participate in the process. That's my motion.
Let me restate it. Uh, your amendment is to go to two meetings a month.
Go back to two meetings a month.
Yep. And, uh, go to 19:30, 7:30 at night to start.
First meeting would be 5:30, the second meeting would be 7:30.
Is everybody, okay, do we have a second? Uh, okay, we do not have a second, Mr. Jones. Uh, and so that dies. Is there another, any other discussion? Mr. Snodgrass?
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment.
Mr. Snod, I recognize you for an amendment. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd make, make an amendment to the motion that we add September 22nd and we add October 20th, uh, to this proposed calendar. And can we explain that or?
No, we'll get into on the floor first. Uh, do we have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Jones, second it. Go right ahead, please.
Uh, for me, it just, I feel like it meets in the middle. Uh, I, I recognize that the fall, uh, our fall schedule is, can be a little bit more light. It wasn't much this year, but it can be more light than, than the spring schedule with doing the budget, but I feel like this is a compromise. It meets in the middle, uh, so it gives us the one meeting a month for, for July and for August and we can go back to two meetings a month for September and October and then November of 20, that, that fourth Tuesday would be the week of Thanksgiving anyway, so, uh, we don't, wouldn't, wouldn't want to meet that, that Tuesday and then of course December would be historically what we've always done and, uh, I feel like this would be a good compromise, uh, for us. Uh, there are, uh, there are, um, uh, great arguments, uh, on both sides for this schedule and, and indeed there are, there are times where zoning things have come up. Uh, I know we, recently we've had people, they've had to wait all the way till December to get some zoning things to, to go through, so I feel like adding these two meetings for, uh, October and Septem, or September and October will, will help us with that. That's my motion.
Uh, thank you. Other discussion?
If I could.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the County Council. Um, I don't, I don't like your idea. I, I don't like it at all, but bottom, it's, well, no, no, I don't mean that ugly or anything. I just believe there's only one argument and that's to go back to two. I don't think there's a good argument on both sides. I think it's, uh, one good argument, that's to go back to two meetings a month. I think that, um, we get just a little disconnected with 30 days between meetings. You know, something comes up, planning a zoning or whether it's a rezoning or, or anything else, we say we'll call a special meeting. You know, when you call special meetings, you, you hope to have four people show up. That's usually what you get and, uh, any of our other businesses that, that cause for multiple readings, ordinances and things like that, I just, I hate to say this because I use this word, I just think it's sloppy government and, um, I would like to see us go back to two meetings. I definitely would like to see us have one meeting later in the evening because I've had so many folks mention that they aren't able to get here at 5:30. That's why I said 7:30 at night. Um, that would really give folks a, a good chance to get here, but, but, but let me tell you why I made my second.
I appreciate it.
Because yours is certainly better than what the alternative's gonna be one meeting, so I, I thank you for that. I will support yours because of that reason. It is certainly better than the motion on the floor, the first motion on the floor, in my opinion. So, uh, appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Uh, very good, there are none. Let's move that to a vote. We have an amendment to the original schedule shown on board that we would add to that amendment, to that, uh, schedule, 22 September and 20 October. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Uh, Mr. Jones and Mr. Snodgrass, those opposed signify by raising your hand. Mr. Cornell, Mr. Bozard, Mr. Burns and Mr. Gardner, and the amendment fails. I now propose we move forward to a vote on the schedule as presented by Mr. Gardner, having had a lot of discussion. Uh, all those in favor of Mr. Gardner's proposal signify by raising your hand. And it's Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Gardner, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bozard and Mr. Cornell, all those opposed, as Mr. Jones and the motion passed and that's signals our intent to meet again on the 14th of January. Uh, with that, we move to item number two, which is Blaney EMS Station. It's at Tab I. This is very exciting. Um, Mr. Carpenter, can you explain this?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, as you recall, when we, in the budget season, uh, were discussing the creation of a, uh, professional fire service, one of the steps we had to take to move in that direction was to build an EMS station in, in Elgin, the Blaney Station, as the EMS station has been borrowing the fire station. Uh, the builder that we have under contract for the first two stations is committed to keeping the price the same that we had for the first two station, uh, so he's committed to keeping it at or under $550,000. Both stations have come in so far at under $550,000, but we're requesting the ability to transfer 560 from the EMS reserves, uh, in order to begin processing, uh, the, the aspect of building this building.
I'd imagine there'd be some discussion on that. Uh, with that, can we have a motion to approve?
So, make it.
Uh, Mr. Cornell, a second?
Second.
Second from, uh, Mr. Bozard. I defer to you. This is your, uh, district, Ben. You want to talk about it?
Yeah, the first question I have is, can you remind me of the square footage of the facility, just so we can get an idea of value? I defer that to Gerald.
It's equivalent to the other EMS building?
The other two.
Same design.
Yes, sir.
Same size.
Yes, sir.
And as far as the driveway cut and any requirements from DOT, have we looked that far ahead and, you know, where would it come out in relation to, uh, a fire call coming out as well?
If you need us to bring expertise forward. Gerald or Gene, if you can come forward and help, uh, Vic out on some of these particulars.
Generally, what happens is, uh, first responders are, are toned out and then approximately one minute later, then EMS is toned, so you would never have, I don't see us having a traffic jam issue there. It was discussed to go out towards the thermoid, uh, driveway and then back to the left, but there's a strip of land that is owned by that company that, um, in previous attempts, we've been, been unable to access, so we would be using the same curb cut.
Okay, and so as far as we, we know right now through the research, there's no DOT requirement, different, um...
Everything is, everything's checked out to this point.
Okay. And for the public to understand, one of the reasons this is important is as we move to a full-time fire service at that location, you're gonna have to have the additional office space, place to sleep and house the fire equipment needed to, um, actually accommodate a full-time fire service. Is that right?
Correct. Correct, yes, sir. That's why the, the EMS station will actually be completely separate behind the fire station. Uh, living areas will be, um, you know, separate for each discipline.
Okay, so as EMS is totally displaced by our growth in fire service, we've got to find somewhere else for them to go.
That's exactly right.
Thankfully, we own some land nearby.
Yeah, the, the square footage of the current fire station wouldn't accommodate.
Uh, Gene, we need you over the microphone. Thank you.
Yeah, right now we own seven and a half acres behind, well, with the Blaney Fire Department.
Right.
So, the EMS station is gonna be built directly behind Blaney Fire Station, roads connecting into the driveway at the Blaney Fire Department, so there wouldn't be any interference by separating them like that.
Okay, thank you.
Just stay up there, Gene. I, I got a feeling you'll be hearing more. Uh, Mr. Snodgrass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, so this is coming from EMS Reserve budget, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What's the, what's the current balance on that ballpark?
I can get that for you. I didn't bring that with me, but it's, it's, it's well over that.
Well over that, so this transfer is not gonna?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Other comments? Well, this is great. Is this the third of, of, of EMS stations that we've created in the last, uh, 12 months? Is that the timeframe of, Gene?
Yes, sir. Third one, this will be the third one built out of last year.
This is very exciting and along with the, the new equipment and the great personnel management of Gerald and your team, Gerald, shows excellent leadership, good equipment, good training, good people, now good facilities. Uh, yeah.
This would not create, uh, more operating or very little operating expense increase?
No, sir.
Already operating.
Already operating out of Blaney Fire Station.
It would increase probably a little bit, uh, for utilities and what have you, but...
This will be a newer station.
Significant.
In theory, it can be even less, more, more energy efficient or better appliances.
Very good.
Mr. Bozard.
What's the timeframe for starting? Uh, if we can get the approval, they told us they could start January the 2nd.
Does this imply that you've already had the bid?
Uh, when we bid out previously, we bid out for four stations, so bids have already been put out.
And is this the same builder out of Cassett?
Same builder, JP Smith.
Yeah, okay. He's got a New Jersey accent, ask him to work on that, would you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but it's a local businessman and he's done a great job. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I just want to say something. Um, Gene, you and Gerald both, you're doing a great job and I appreciate it. Thank you. No question for you tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep, Ben, go ahead.
One other comment, um, just on value. So, in the past, certain structures that we've done, if you attach, uh, some federal funds to them, like Davis Bacon Act funds or bond or debt service on it, those, uh, those projects have cost us anywhere from 25% to 33% more than what this would cost us, an internal transfer, just spending the money directly without debt service as a capital project. So, I think this is the smartest way to do it. Thank you.
Other comments? Um, what fun it was to cut the ribbon on that last one and the most fun is not having anything but the sound of crickets when people complain about accessibility responsiveness of our EMS. Gerald, I put that in your, in your credit and that with Gene and the support from this council, you seven, uh, seven up here that give resources to a vital item for our county. I believe, Mr. Bozard, there's a late, uh, breaking news here.
You're hearing a squealing up here. It's kinda, need to adjust it, Al.
Thank you.
So, essentially, Al, you were concerned about both sides of the river. Thank you. And you're satisfied with that? All right. Uh, with that, I think we've had enough discussion. This is very exciting. Uh, this is great news for the county and what a great year it makes it for all of us. With that, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand and it's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much indeed. Uh, the final item is under new business is for discussion, a change to County Council policies regarding the use of appropriated travel funds. Uh, I'll turn this one over to you, Jimmy. Uh, do you want to make a motion, uh, open for a discussion? How do you want to frame this, sir?
Julian, I'd like to just open for a discussion.
Okay. Uh, with that, do you mind if I read what's on here so that everybody will know what we're looking at, uh, to include the public? I don't think it's, it's up on, no, we don't have it on the words on the screen, so let me read this and it says, "All ticketed travel, air and train and lodging to events deemed worthy of their participation by a member of County Council must be booked through the clerk to council," period. "Upon receiving appropriate confirmations of their reservations, the clerk shall present this information to the County Council in the next agenda package as an item for information only." Uh, Mr. Jones, you want to lead us off?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Burns? Um, I called Councilman, uh, excuse me, Vice Chairman Tucker last week because I had heard that a member of County Council was in Washington and I didn't know anything about it. Of course, he said he didn't know anything about it either and of course, after looking into it, I was told that there were some texts sent out, however, I didn't, I didn't see it, didn't get it. I even went back through mine today, so I didn't get it, but, uh, I was going to put this item on the agenda for a vote, but then Vice Chairman Tucker asked me, would I wait? Hold off, so I, I am, but council members, we're all gonna see this again. As it stands now, Kershaw County has no policy on travel by council members. Now, I, the county has no transparency for travel by council members. Now, I want to say this and I'll make myself clear. Nobody did anything wrong, okay? Nobody did anything illegal. It's just we don't have a policy and we need a policy. Now, let me say about transparency. Councilman David Snodgrass takes so many selfies of himself, he's very transparent in Washington. I can assure you, everybody knew he was there because they called me and told me and, uh, but I, I did want to make that clear.
Thank you.
You know, supposedly we're up there for, for economic development. Kershaw County has been totally unsuccessful in economic development and no new industry in the last 10 years. Lost more industrial jobs than we have gained. South Carolina Central Alliance, I believe, and this is my opinion, is a total waste South Carolina Central Alliance, I believe, and this is my opinion, is a total waste of the taxpayers' money. South Carolina Central Alliance is self-promoting, I think unnecessary expense for the taxpayers, has not brought a single industry to Kershaw County in over 10 years. I think we put $75,000 into that. Mr. Carpenter, is that correct?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two thousand, excuse me. You know, I think it was a waste of the taxpayers' money and unnecessary travel to Washington, DC. Let, let me say this. I think Mr. Carpenter should have gone. He's the acting economic development director, or, and I also went down, let me just say this too, I went down and met with, uh, Lauren Reader and Stuart. What great people. They got it going on. They really do. I hope the new economic development director will, will at least listen to them, hear what they have to say, and, and, and give us some strong consideration, because I was very impressed with what, some of the ideas that they have. And, uh, they have different ideas. Not doing the same old thing over and over and over, spec buildings, you know, your typical whatever. But anyway, you know, we talked about, well, we went up there and we met with Ralph Norman, Lindsey Graham. Well, that's just fine. But Lindsey Graham, Ralph Norman will come meet us here anytime we give them a call. Uh, I think they would look for the opportunity to come here and save, of course, we save that money. Also, if you think about it, and I want y'all to, to really, I really want you to listen to what I'm going to say on this. We have five layers of economic development bureaucracy in Kershaw County. Five layers. And I just want to share that. You have the South Carolina Department of Commerce funded by the state markets Kershaw County. You have the South Carolina Electric Cooperatives, South Carolina Power Team, they're funded by the Electric Cooperatives and markets Kershaw County. I, I actually like them.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, what does this got to do with travel? We don't need a lesson on.
I can't believe you called a point of order on that.
I don't have a problem listening to what you're talking about, but it has nothing to do with what this says.
So, so what you're saying is that you want to call a point of order for what? To shut me down?
No.
To not be able to say what I'm going to say?
I just want you to talk about what this says, this, and you're not, you're talking about economic development, you're not talking about policy of travel. That's all I'm talking about.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, excuse me, Mr. Gardner, let me just say, we had a council member go to Washington for economic development, but that is part of.
I think, I think I could take the point, but the idea is not to shut down.
Could I just finish?
No, I, I've got a point of order and I'm ruling on it. Um, I have a point of order here that says that the discussion from Mr. Jones is off the point of the motion, uh, and it's broadly in the characteristic of economic development. Mr. Jones, if you could focus on the motion.
I'm going to, yes, sir, and that's what I'm doing, and that's exactly what I'm doing. And I, you called a point of order, I want to get the attorney's opinion on this.
Points of order. And he's, he's ruled, I think he's ruled you can go ahead and continue to speak, but he wants you to talk to.
I want you to talk to the motion, please.
I am going to speak to the motion.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And, and as I said, you have five layers of bureaucracy, you know, and, and we were there for our economic development. Of course, you have the Economic Development Office, which I think is totally overfunded and paid by taxpayers. You have private consultants that are paid by taxpayers. You have the South Carolina Central Alliance, which I think is unnecessary to put $72,000 in. I'm talking fast because I don't want another point of order to try to shut me down and get it out. Um, but as I said, I do think the Electric Cooperative is an asset in Kershaw County. It does cost us over a million dollars a year. Um, let me just say this. We need a policy. If we're going to travel for economic development, out of this, or we're going to travel anywhere for anything, we need a policy. And I'll be honest with you, I, I hope it would have passed if I'd have put it on the agenda tonight, but we'll find out because I'm going to put it on the agenda in the future. It's just responsible government. That's what it boils down. And I think when you don't have a policy on county council members' travel, I have a question. Maybe, um, the administrator can clear this, clear this up for me. Is there a policy on travel for the employees of the county?
Employee travel must be approved by the administrator.
Mr. Bozard?
Budgeted.
Okay, okay, I just didn't know. Listen, um, okay, so we do have a policy or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But yet we do not have a policy on county councils' travel.
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, as the acting economic development director have a question, why did you not take the trip to Washington?
Well, because I'm also the administrator, and I've been on this trip once several years ago, so I didn't see the value in taking the trip again.
You didn't see the value in it?
I've done it once and that was.
Uh, I'd also like to say, um, thank you for this time. I think that's going to probably conclude my comments.
Uh, that we do have a policy, and that is one that I think we faithfully followed, is that when council travels, and that includes the retreats and things of that nature, a report is rendered to this body. Um, there is a copy now in your enclosed below in the FYI, FYI part of the budget of the, uh, agenda, is a full report on the trip taken by Mr. Snodgrass. Uh, other comments? Mr. Snodgrass?
Uh, question, Mr. Jones, did you, do you know, do you know how this Department of Commerce is structured in a way that they encourage, I want to say maybe require, but they encourage all counties to be a part of an economic alliance? Did you, were you aware of that?
I am aware of that.
So would you, are, do you have another alliance that you suggest that we should be a part of? Do you have another solution?
I do. I do. We can go ahead and stop spending money on a system such as this alliance that hasn't produced anything in the last 10 years, probably hasn't, I don't, I can't remember where they have actually been effective in helping us produce any, uh, industry whatsoever in Kershaw County. And let me ask this too, maybe.
I've got the floor. You're answering my question.
You asked me a question.
Yeah.
Okay. But yes, I think that we should, uh, do away with this money we're spending.
And I, and I'm not, I'm not here to defend Central. Uh, in fact, one of the, for me, one of the reasons to, to go on the trip was to see Central for myself, to meet, I've never met anyone from there, and, uh, got my own questions about it. So I, I was able to, to see it, you know, firsthand, and that's, that's a whole nother discussion. But I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that the way the Department of Commerce works, the way the ballgame works, and we may not like the rules of the ballgame, but this is, this is how the state of South Carolina says how you play ball. And so I, I just, I just want to make sure that we are, we're aware that, that these are just within the rules of the Department of Commerce.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Uh, if, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Let me just say this, whatever the, what are the ruse are, that, that, that is the ruse. However, we have been unsuccessful for the last 10 years. What we're doing with the Department of Commerce, with the alliance, you know, with the, uh, private consultants, everything that we're doing has been a failure. We have not succeeded. So when you have that happen, why would you not consider maybe doing something different?
I still.
And, and, wait, wait, no, no, no.
Go ahead.
I still have floor now, Mr. Snodgrass.
I mean, I have the floor, and you're answering my questions.
But I just been, I was recognized by the chairman.
I didn't mean to interrupt. Let's, out of courtesy, could you continue, Mr. Snodgrass?
No, I just, you know, Mr. Jones, I've got a lot of respect for you, and, you know, I've worked with you on some things. I just, I look forward to my council briefings because, and I, I told you this earlier, for me, it puts me in an awkward position that you bring this up. I'm the last one that traveled, and then you bring this up, and, uh, would even, I, I don't think that you have suggested this, but it does create doubt in, perhaps in their minds. And, and I look forward to my briefings to let everyone, make sure everyone's aware that, that this, this trip was, I was asked to go on this from a county official to represent Kershaw County. And of course, that's, I'm getting into my briefing, so I'm going to, I'm going to stop there, but, uh, I yield the floor.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, very much.
And then I'll go to Mr. Bozard and Mr. Cornell.
That'd be great. Well, just as much as you, I, I guess you're, you're somewhat offended that I would bring this up in open session at county council. I'm somewhat taken back, Mr. Snodgrass, that I was here on the street, that you're in Washington, you're a member of county council, and I didn't know anything about it. I find that unfortunate. I, I find it, um, disappointing. So I think we need to do a bit, a little bit better job on identifying who's going where, and especially when you're doing it on the public's money.
Okay.
And let me say this too.
Okay.
Why would you not send the county minister, the county minister just said he didn't see any value in the trip?
He didn't see any value for him to go because he's already been.
But I think he knows a lot, I think he knows a pretty good bit about economic development, and, uh, more so than you, sir, myself, or anybody else sitting up here on county council. Nobody up here has produced, not a thing, and you keep doing the same thing over and over. Now, I, let.
Okay, let's get back to the policy.
Well, we, we.
I ask council, gentlemen, I ask to get back to the policy that Mr. Jones has put in front of us. I will read it again, that we should go through, and I will read extracts. "County council must be booked through the county clerk, and upon receiving appropriate confirmations, this information shall be presented by the county clerk in the agenda package to follow for information only." Uh, with that, I go to Mr. Bozard.
I had.
I'm giving it to Mr. Bozard.
Mr. Chairman, I had the floor.
Go ahead, Mr. Bozard.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I have been on two trips to Washington by invitation only. If I couldn't have went, nobody went. Mary did both of my bookings for me. She booked my motel. She took care of my allowance and everything else. So we do have a policy as far as that goes. The only thing that had, hasn't been done is, is this statement here says, "Presenting this information to county council next agenda." And I don't see where that would be a big deal. Other than that, she's doing everything that's in this thing right here already.
Yeah. Mr. Cornell.
I've got the floor right now. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
It's, um, sometimes we don't have a choice whether we get somebody else to go or not, as I just stated. Some of these is by invitation only. You come down by name. You don't have a choice. You either go or you don't go. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cornell, please.
Chairman, um, I think there's actually a policy in practice. It'd be fine to write it down and make sure it's formalized if needed. I don't see any issue with that. Um, I think I heard that Kershaw County has been a complete failure in economic development. That's something I would have to just completely disagree with. If we forget, I think we voted just a moment ago on a $17 million investment that's represented by Midlands Regional Rehab Hospital, LLC. If I'm not mistaken, that is an area in which the county organized and set up, probably upon advice of consultants. I wasn't here when they did it. Seems like a, a good move now in hindsight, but that was, uh, designed to attract business. And lo and behold, uh, we just voted tonight on a $17 million FLO for that advanced physical rehab facility. I know I'm a little far abreast from the topic of the motion, but I just feel like we have to correct the facts. Um, on the same, in the same vein, um, that park in particular is ripe for further growth. Kershaw Health has just received a CON or certificate of need for a surgical center that will go there. That's a private business that's going to be investing millions of dollars in Kershaw County. I fail to see the, uh, the failure, and actually, I'm excited about the growth. I'm glad that we had a representative from a local business here tonight, and, uh, that we've been able to assist in any small way we can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm going to take the floor for a moment.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
I'm taking the floor for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, I first have to agree with Mr. Cornell. You cannot say we totally failed. Uh, as to the best, best methods, number two, we'll certainly pursue those aggressively. Uh, number three, we've had a consistent discussion about the Central-South Carolina Alliance, and there will be more of those. And maybe at the budget, we can take that up, uh, in January and February. Uh, number four, every council member was told by me in a text that Mr. Snodgrass was going in my place, and it was necessitated at the last minute as a part of a regularly scheduled meeting that I was to have in Washington, DC on economic development, and I could not go. And I, to those council members I could reach, I offered them the opportunity to go and reaching finally Mr. Snodgrass, he gainfully stepped forward and I thank him for doing that. So every one of you received a text, or at least I sent it. Uh, I'm sorry for the short-term notice, but this was budgeted and anticipated, and I had to drop out at the last minute. Now let me structure the discussion. Mr. Jones, a point of order has been filed, and I've ruled on it that we need to get on to the point that you have here for discussion. Let me ask you this, Mr. Jones.
Let, let me finish.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Jones.
Go ahead.
Uh, do you want to frame these words as a, a motion to be voted on? Because I'm hearing generally approval of what you have in these words. They seem to be carefully crafted. Is that what you wish to vote on?
Well, I, I actually put it on there for discussion because I thought the consensus or some, Vice Chairman Tucker said he, he just wanted me to wait, so I said, since he was so cooperative with me, working with me on this, and he didn't know about this either. He didn't know that you were in Washington. I didn't know you were in Washington.
Well, he.
But let me say something about your point of order. You want to sit there, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, and hound a point of order on me, but yet you let each one of these council members respond, and you didn't interrupt one single time when they were, they were coming at me about this issue. And they, so they were pretty much off schedule too, if you consider me off schedule. I guess I'd like to ask you, why would you do that?
I, I don't agree with that characterization. I want to move it on to business. Uh, do you, I think you've got a helpful amendment here to our procedures, and if that, if you would like to put that on the, before us as a motion, Jimmy, I'd certainly entertain a first and a second.
Well, you know what? I will, because I think it's that important.
Okay.
As said early, we have a policy. We do not have a policy. Um, okay, I'll make the motion that we have a. I can do that.
I can do that. I've invited it, and I'm going to, I'm going to carry it forward. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
We're all correct on that, right, Mr. Attorney?
Chairman's departmentary, and he said you could.
Uh, thank you very much, everybody. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
All right. The motion is that they changed the county council policy regarding the use of the appropriate funds, uh, for travel. All ticketed travel, air and train, and lodging to events deemed worthy of their participation by a member of the county council must be booked through the clerk to council upon receiving appropriate confirmations of, uh, their reservations. The clerk shall present this information to, uh, and place it in the agenda packet where we have, uh, future, for further information or future information.
Okay, very good. Can we have a second?
I'll second that because that's what I did.
Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass. I think, uh, I'm ready to support that as any further discussion.
If I could.
Yeah.
I would like to say thank you to each and every one of you for that. I think this is a good move in the right direction, and I'd also like to say, Mr. Snodgrass, I don't know who, where you're getting your advice, but you're getting your advice from the wrong people on county council. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Uh, Mr. Gardner.
Mr. Jones, I'll support this. But you know, when you read that, the economic development was not mentioned in there one time. Not one time. That was my point of order. You got off on track that was not there. I'll support, I support this. But when you got off on economic development, you talked about everything else but this, that was my problem. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Mr. Gardner, you're so wrong on that. Bottom line is, this is a policy on travel. We just did travel. The travel was for economic development, so therefore, economic development was a part of the travel. I mean, of this conversation or discussion for this issue we just voted, or we're fixing to vote on.
Okay. All right, Mr. Snodgrass?
Just want to say, Mr. Jones, I don't get my advice from anyone. This was an opportunity for me to go and represent Kershaw County in Washington, DC, and to make connections for my constituents, and to brag and to talk about Kershaw County, and that's what I did. No one advised me to do that. You know who advised me to do that? Me. Because I was elected to represent the people of Kershaw County, and in the words of Martin Luther, here, here I stand, I can do no other. So I, I'm, I'm, this is, this is, this was on no one else's advice.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Thank you, Mr. Snod.
Well, in the words of Jimmy Jones, I'm going to always ask questions when there's something that I don't understand, when I don't know about something, when I feel disrespected because a member of county council is going somewhere and other council members don't know, and Sammy Tucker as well was upset that he didn't know about this issue at hand. And let me say this, I made it clear in the beginning, Mr. Snodgrass, because you seem to be a little upset. So let me just say this, I made it clear in the beginning, nobody did anything wrong. Nobody broke any laws. You are transparent, sir. You take enough selfies of you up here as well as on, in Washington. We all know where you're at. So bottom line is, I just don't understand why there was so much discontent in what I was talking about.
Sure.
Because everything I was talking about was the absolute truth. It's just, maybe it just sounds ugly because you're uncomfortable. Some of you are uncomfortable discussing this, but bottom line is, it was the truth.
Thank you. I'm ready to call the question. Uh, with that, we have the motion before us to change our operating policies as a council to use the clerk to schedule all our travel. And those items would be placed in the archives of our, of our agenda packages for information only. Uh, with that, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Uh, Mr. Jones, Mr. unanimous, thank you very much. And we move on now to council briefings, beginning with Mr. Bozard. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody and hope you have a Happy New Year. Um, a couple of months back, we had a lot of discussion on the roads in you, Lou, Lougoff area and what was gonna happen to them. And I'd like to know what happened to all that discussion, the paperwork that was generated by Mid-Carolina Credit Union and so forth. And, uh, what can we do? What are we doing with it? We just let it drop now? Thank you.
Okay, so you're asking for the staff to get back to you on that?
I sure would like to.
Okay. Very good. I'll ask Mr. Carpenter. Uh, Mr. Connell.
Chairman, one thing I wanted to share, the Elgin Catfish Stomp Christmas Parade. If I tell my friends from up north, oh, yeah, we got a catfish stomp parade, they always ask me, why are you stomping catfish? That's not what it's about, of course. The parade was outstanding. And all the proceeds from the parade, the vendors, the entries go to the Toys Roundup charity. I want to give you a few stats to let you know a little bit about this community and what they do. So overall, they had 45 vendors out at Potter Park selling, uh, there was some catfish stew and various other wares and foods. There was over 120 entries in the parade, and they raised over $5,900 for 95 families that have been adopted this Christmas season. Those are kind of the selfless things that I like to think about this holiday season. People organizing, getting together, and getting a lot done, raising a lot of money to help those who are in need or less fortunate. And I'm just grateful to be in the community and see that it happens. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, Mr. Jones, sir.
Thank you so much. Um, I would just like to say that I appreciate this county council voting on this policy. I think it's the right thing to do. And the question was asked to me earlier about, did I know about the Department of Commerce and the Alliance? Well, I would say we have a, there is no law that says we have to do economic development that way. Am I correct on that, Mr. Bozard, or not?
Not that I'm aware of. No law.
There's no law. It's just a suggestion, uh, Mr. Snodgrass, about the Alliance. So I just don't agree with their suggestion that we have, we be a member of the Alliance. And, uh, I would like to say to everybody, I'm gonna lower one on you now. Hope, Merry Christmas to each one of you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Snodgrass.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, uh, as, as we talked about, there is in the FYI portion of, of your packet, a summary on, on my DC trip, on our, on the DC trip, our DC trip that we represented Kershaw County. And just wanna, just wanna give a, just a couple of highlights. You, I'm not gonna read it to you. You can, you can read it for your own interest. But the purpose of this trip was to, was to go along with a delegation from Central SC Alliance along with, uh, with their other member counties, Lexington County, Clarendon County, Richland, Orangeburg, Newbury, Fairfield, ourselves, as well as the city of Columbia and Calhoun County. And it was an honor to, to be there with representatives from, from those counties, both elected and as well as staff. But we're there to update our federal delegation on the economic progress of, of our, of our counties. And so I was, I was proud to be able to tell, um, our, our House members from, from Representative Norman to Representative Clyburn's staff, to our senators, about how Kershaw County is leading the way in workforce development with our partnership with CCTC. Uh, it was discovered that we are leading the way when it comes to raising up the next generation and making them aware of the opportunities that are afforded to them in manufacturing. Uh, we do that through our eighth grade manufacturing expo. And as I talked about that in there and in the office with, with Representative Norman, uh, it was, we realized we're leading the way on that. No other counties are, are doing that type of program. We bus in eighth graders and we expose them and make them aware of the opportunities. So we were able to, to, to do some cheerleading, to let them know what's going on and to make them aware about how the legislation that they're working on is, is helping us. We were also able to let them know about our, our needs. Uh, the biggest need that we have is infrastructure. As you, as we are, we are all aware of, DC is, they're preoccupied with, with, with some other things right now. Uh, meanwhile, uh, there's trade agreements that need to get passed that would help us economically. There is infrastructure that needs to get passed, and we were able to share with that. And I was able to sit down with, with, with the aides. And be clear, that's, that's the more, that's the most important people that, that's the really important folks that you want to talk to. Uh, not the House member, not the senator, but their aides and their legislative liaisons. These are, these young men and women are doing, are doing the groundwork. And so was able to, to, to make sure that they had Kershaw County on their radar as they begin to, to draft infrastructure bills and things that will, that will go for. Uh, was able to talk about our, our mega site that we have and, and make them aware of that. I was also able to talk with Senator Scott's staff about opportunity zones. And this is very, very important. In fact, when I knew I was going to Washington DC, I made Central Alliance aware of the fact that, hey, I'm very interested in opportunity zones. I, I need a meeting on that. And so they were able to set up a breakfast in which they, they brought in Senator Scott's lead, lead staffer on opportunity zones, this important legislation that was passed along with, with the Trump tax cuts two years ago. Uh, we have opportunity zones in Kershaw County, and they all reside in District Five, Kershaw County. So you can understand why it was very important to me, understand this legislation, to understand how we can entice and where, how we can encourage private development to come into our county. And, and in return, they can get a, they can get a break on, on their, on their federal taxes for five, seven, 10 years, depending on how they, on how they are able to invest that. So those are some of the couple of things that we did. Was, uh, was able to, to meet with several CEOs of the North American portions of companies, uh, Rolls Royce, UPS, Royal Bank of Canada, some others. Was able to meet an editor from Aviation Weekly, and we were able to talk about the Camden Airport and talk about some of the things that, that we're trying to do and get some ideas off of them. So was, was very grateful for, for the, for the opportunity to go and to represent Kershaw County. Uh, eight years ago, I had the privilege to, to come and to call Kershaw County home. And I had the privilege to, to understand what kind of special place this is. And this is just one of many steps of doing my part to encourage other people to see the beauty that is Kershaw County and that, that this is a place that they want to call home. Uh, so it was my honor to represent all of, all of you on this desk and all of you citizens of Kershaw County. There, there are a lot of people who know where Kershaw County is as a, as a result of this. Thank you, members of council. Blessed Advent season and, of course, Merry Christmas.
Uh, Mr. Gardner.
All I have is a Merry Christmas to everybody. Sorry, I can't.
Yeah, very good. Um, two more parades this week, and we are well into hunting season. Uh, and we move into basketball season, and we're halfway through the budget year. It's been a great year. We got new business. We've got growing current business. Schools are growing and putting up new, uh, and taking down old. That visitor center is gonna make a real difference. Two EMS stations, one more to go. New sheriff and new equipment. KC West, Veterans Park, new leaders in Sheriff's Office and the Detention Center. How you doing? Uh, working on a new library lead and a new EDO. Uh, we've got, uh, a new leadership at our airport, thanks to Mr. Carpenter. And we've got a new approach to rural fire. That's a lot of stuff in six months. Uh, the real story is the people in this county, as we heard tonight. Uh, Susan Witkowski, uh, bringing on school-based health programs. It was faithfully reported in the Chronicle and the WPUB. Wanda Swan helping us to energize leadership in the county for litter. And moreover, pride. Uh, you've got community leaders not elected, serving without pay, such as those who lead our homeowners association. Tiffany Lee and Louis Wilson and others. You got Bubba Henson taking care of the Bethune Parade. You got Mr. Cobb, who helped Gerald out on the EMS. And he didn't have to do that, but he took time out to do it. Craig and Blankenship up in Westville. He cooks for every single team in North Central High School and not just football and soccer. It's amazing what that man does. And he runs a church up there, too. Mark Mason, what he does for us out of his car dealership. I could go on all night about that. Katie Candy, who is helping us bring Wi-Fi. This is a volunteer now, bringing Wi-Fi along with Mike Conley to our rural areas. Vision 2030 Core Group, who are doing the surveys now. Names you know, Scarborough, Van Horn, Wilson, Mason, Stuber, George Gibson, Susan Witkowski. And then you've got some of our nonprofits out there like Toby Edwards and John Cushman, who have found a new entrepreneurial way to tell the story at the steeplechase and even do high school cross-country. That's all in the last six months, ladies and gentlemen. And then we've talked about Johnny Outlaw and what he does and did. And then you've got the case, the Kershaw County Swim Team. Heck, we've got a river. We ought to have a swim team. You got Danny Boyce and Jackie Vioto. And then the coaches and families that brought us the ponytails. And then you got Bob Jen Georgie and Ed Kahn, who are leading us with a civilian group, nonprofit, no pay, to develop bike trails in this county, all over the place. And then we've got the volunteers who led us on the voting machines in the recent elections in Bethune and in Elgin. And they've given us valuable lessons that Mr. Carpenter can now install for us in the 2020 elections. And then all the volunteers that are helping us with the census, led by Mr. Conley and Mr. Carpenter and Councilman Tucker. What a great place. Merry Christmas, Mr. Car, Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, a few items for you tonight. Um, first of all, just a brief report. Mr. Bozard wanted an update on where we are with our solid waste department. Several years after we made the switch, as you recall, we were, um, for a number of years under contract to waste management. Uh, there was a lot of concern over the quality of the service we were receiving, the timeliness of their efforts. And so council back in 1617 approved us, assuming the hauling ourself. And so in those, in the four years since then, um, we have, after initial year of coming in at the red because we had to pay waste management for part of the year, and it took a little longer than we budgeted. Uh, we've been in the black ever since then. Uh, last year, in 1819, finishing with $121,000 to the good in that fund. Uh, the vehicles now are hitting about 100,000 miles. Of course, we got vehicles that are designed to hit high miles. Uh, so they're about middle age at this point. We know that we're reaching where we're gonna have to start looking, starting to replace one or two a year in order to have a rotation going on, as we bought all five of these at once, and you don't want to have to buy five at a time. So, uh, next year, perhaps, we'll look at adding, starting rotation and replacing them. We had no major problems with these vehicles. Mostly it's been tires. When you're coming in and out of landfills and, and convenience centers, you can run over a lot of nails. And that's the kind of nature of the business. Uh, the, the tarping system is the biggest damage repair that we have to do because so many times it comes up and down so many times a day. And generally, it's just gonna be nuts, bolts, broken welds. And we do 95% of those repairs in-house ourself. So it doesn't really cost us anything. Uh, we find that all our trucks are up to date on our services. Uh, we have, um, everything is, is covered with them well. Uh, we find that, um, the biggest issue we have with our, our compactors is hydraulic lines. That's generally what's gonna be the issue with a compactor is, uh, they rupture. And, um, they, uh, they're made locally, and again, county employees replace them. Uh, so all in all, we've got about 105 pieces of equipment out there that we purchased. Um, those are 80 open-top containers, 25 compactors, and of course, the five vehicles. Staff is maintaining most of them and operating. Yes, sir, Mr. Bozard. Only damage we had was when there was an accident. Yes, sir. No, sir, we haven't had, no, sir, we haven't had any major repairs.
That is true.
Yes, sir. Also, Mr. Chairman, members of council, um, as you know, uh, as we discussed very briefly earlier, we are in the process of looking for our new Economic Development Director. Uh, the position is live nationally, and the search is out. And we anticipate closing it in the first week of January, which point, uh, we'll take candidates, put them together, and start the interview process. Again, we are well on schedule to having onboard, um, an amazing leader in sometime in March. Until then, I will be your stand-in leader in maintaining, um, our efforts going forward. We are working on, it's been a surprisingly busy, um, last 30 days for us. And hopefully, some of these will turn into projects we'll be able to discuss with you. And then finally, we do have some parades coming up, and you'll see, as always, county employees in those parades. We think it's important for the citizens of this county to see us and to realize that we live here and we're part of this community, too. So when you're either in the parade or watching the parade, please look out for some of your friends and neighbors who'll be in there as well. That's my report.
You did forget to say Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah. Mr. DeBoz.
My report is Merry Christmas, Chairman.
Uh, with that, that concludes all our briefings. Can we have a motion to adjourn for the year?
Move to adjourn.
Uh, Mr. Gardner, second from Mr. Connell. Any discussion?
Do you really mean that? Any more discussion?
Well, it was that.
I do have something I want to say, but if you would.
If it bears on the closing of the meeting, yes.
So if I say something, it has to be on what?
Uh, bears on the closing of the meeting.
I thought if you had any other business, you could discuss anything you wanted to during this time.
I, I don't think I'm a.
No, no, I, but I guess I want some clarification because can I say what was on my mind? Or do I have to follow in line with what you're saying?
If it bears on the adjournment, and I, if you, but we all have a lot on our minds.
So what would I have to ask about the adjournment? You said, is there any further discussion? I, I just want some clarification. Does that mean?
No.
I'm just asking a question.
I'm giving you the answer as the parliamentarian, that we're moving to adjournment. And if there's any reason we should not, I'd like to hear from you.
So that's when you say any further discussion?
Of the motion. Thank you.